Yeah, she's in Kentucky to right now, but she's been gone. She went to Oregon, Utah,
Tappan.
Buffalo.
We're gonna get started. Yellow alert. A call to order, the October fourth, two thousand eighteen Planning Commission meeting. A roll call, please.
Commissioner Bran. Commissioner Britton.
Here.
Commissioner Chapman.
Here.
Commissioner Jenkins.
Here.
Commissioner McDavid. Vice Chairperson Derling.
Here.
And Chairperson Robinson.
Okay, everyone will rise and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Okay, some instructions. For individuals who wish to speak, this is on any item that you want. Oh, thanks. But the Planning Commission cannot take any action on it. We might listen to you and make a recommendation of somebody, but we can't take action. The next one is, if you wanna speak or give comments or whatever, we have blue sheets over here. If you could fill them out and give them to the secretary here, we'll get to you in order. No correspondents, right?
Oh, we got public comment.
Huh?
We have speakers for public comment.
Oh, we do?
Yep. One speaker, John Miller George.
Okay.
Now, can you hear me? Okay. I wanna speak about a non-agenda item and basically two things. One is, I just came to town and I live in paradise currently. And I came to town to get a business license within the city of Oroville. And I don't know if the Planning Commission has anything to do with this, but it was a lot more involved than I expected and certainly way more involved than it should be. I think that whatever influence you have on the council, you all should recommend that they automate and streamline most of the application processes. The way that things work now is you're not allowed to get a business permit issued unless it covers the costs of issuing it. And so if your costs are high, your costs are gonna be high on a new business. The second thing that I wanted to talk about in terms of planning is that if you take a look at Google Fiber, who went around and rounded up some cities and they wanted to get permission to use the utility poles or to dig trenches and whatnot. That process was also partially a revenue source and a licensing nightmare. And so they were successful in the cities that said, well, we will clear the decks so that you can access the same telephone poles that the telephone company does or the power poles from the power company. They had rules in place that would make that a cumbersome, you know, block by block fight. And frankly, internet in the United States and Oroville sucks. You guys have crap. The FCC just recently said that you don't have to have any faster than twenty-five megabits per second service. Okay? Right now, the gold standard is a thousand megabits per second. Now, nobody wants to be the caboose, but we're making ourselves the caboose and we're making Oroville, California, the United States, a laughing stock at the way that we do business. Okay? We need to like streamline things now.
Sissy Smith.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here from the African American Family and Cultural Center in collaboration with in collaboration with California Health Collaborative. And what I would like to ask is, what are you guys going to be a part of trying to regulate flavored tobacco and vaping here in Oroville? For the, we are part of the smoke-free North State, and so I'm just trying to see what your views are on the vaping and the flavored tobacco, trying to regulate the advertisements of it at the retail stores.
I don't think that would be something that would come from the Planning Commission.
That would be part of your view?
Come from the city council if it was gonna be something done.
Okay.
And also at the state and federal level. I know the feds are really looking into it.
Okay.
So it might come down from the federal level, too.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. I was asked to come and see what your views were on it, so.
There was an application on board for a while regarding changing ordinance, but I believe the applicant withdrew that process. So tell that becomes comes back before the board. You know, I don't think we can make a comment on that.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
That was the last speaker.
That was the last one?
For that item.
All right, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to look over the minutes, and anybody wanna make a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes of August twenty-third, two thousand eighteen, regular Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And take a vote. Anybody wanna change their vote? Vote's closed.
Motion carries.
Okay, we go into regular business. Be taking public comments on the cannabis zoning ordinance. And staff, you wanna make a presentation at all?
Yes, good evening, Chairperson Derling and Commission. Gary Lehman, city planner for the city of Oroville interim. Just last Thursday, on September twenty-seventh, we had our meeting to review the cannabis ordinance. We did not have a quorum to make a vote, so it was put today for review. In August, we had met, that was August twenty-seventh, and had met for review of the municipal code and the ordinance as it was written and made comments at that time. One thing that I wanna everybody to keep in mind in the audience and that that this is not a a vote of approval of marijuana being sold, distributed, or anything in the city of Oroville. This is in fact commentary period for the municipal code if in fact the council decides to move forward with it. And so with that, the Commission had made comments to what the original write-up was from the consultants of the municipal code, which is highlighted in yellow on our forms. And as you can see in your forms, which is highlighted in yellow, the, there was concerns about our infrastructure. And so we brought up about the infrastructure and made some changes to that, impact to sewer capacity, traffic, law enforcement, and air quality. There were also some concerns, but not a concise distance of what they wanted in clearance from parks, schools, in that when the state law allows six hundred feet, and so there was a change on that to a thousand feet to be consistent with the thousand feet in the state law for separation between dispensaries, keeping the numbers consistent. There was also concerns from the Commission about clearances, not only from schools and daycare centers and youth centers, but also from public parks, churches with twenty members or greater. So we have a, two maps in front of you, and if we can put the one with the original six hundred feet clearance that's up on the screen that we see here. This is the original cannabis that did not include the six hundred feet or the clearances from the parks or the churches as we had, as there was a concern with the Commission. And this was the one that went forward. This one here shows the six hundred foot clearance to schools and daycare centers and youth centers. And then it also shows the, in green, so that would be the red, and then in green shows the zoning areas that is available for where marijuana would be able to be, marijuana businesses would be able to be in per the zoning requirement. On the next one, which we have, is the revised with the thousand foot clearance, which is also inclusive of the parks and the churches with twenty members or greater. Though it, actually, I gotta rephrase that because it's, it was too difficult to get the churches in there on this map. So this will show your downtown overlay because there was also question at that meeting on August twenty-seventh about where the downtown overlay district was. Because it's not, dispensaries will not be allowed in the downtown overlay. So where the downtown overlay is, and so our historic downtown overlay is outlined in the purple. And then the school buffer with a thousand, and you can see the marking. And then the parks buffer with a thousand. And then the parcels with allowable zoning would be in the green. So with our buffers, you can see that there are parcels and zoning areas that would typically allow, but once the buffers are added in, eliminates some of those areas. The other change was signage. And then visions and the smell. The, that, the marijuana or the products, whatever, cannot be visible from outside of the building, from the exterior of the building in lieu of public way. Because public way could be a distance away depending on how large the site was or whatever, and this is just viewable from the exterior. The other would be the advertisement of signs. So there'll be, on the dispensaries, we'll be allowing the advertisement, as we had indicated at the Planning Commission in the change, that the signage, they can have advertisement signs of their name of the site or business for dispensaries. However, there is no advertisement signage or any signage allowed. Other than that, that's by state law of the indications for any of the cannabis cultivation or the nurseries or the micro businesses. Therefore, not advertising what's actually happening in the building itself. But the dispensaries themselves can advertise for their name. So with that being said, we can look at this for our revised with the thousand feet and with the parks and schools and historic downtown overlay. So with that, I leave it to the comment of the Commission. And any comments that we have from the public that would like to comment? And if there's any questions, please feel free to ask.
Do any of the commissioners have questions of staff at this time, just questions? No, I'm just, just a question, no comments, just on what he presented. If not, then we'll go to public comments then. Okay, open the meeting to public comments on the cannabis zoning ordinance.
Jessica McKenzie and then John Miller George, and those are the only two speaker cards I have.
Good evening, gentlemen. First of all, thank you very much for the work that you've done on this. I will be as brief as I can because I think there's probably a clock running somewhere. I'll start with the simple ones. I understand the objective about the adding no advertising signs, but since all of these are gonna be put through a conditional use permit anyway, I think that's actually extraneous. And you would have to go back and define what you meant by an advertising sign as opposed to just letting the CUP process deal with that as it came up. The bigger issue for me is the intent. It's easy to go six hundred, a thousand, seven fifty, whatever. We're talking about numbers. We're playing with thoughts. But our intention is to actually allow for an industry to come into our community and thrive. If we want to write an ordinance in such a way that it can't do that, we ought to just not do that. So you've seen this guy, right? This is the one that reflects what was in the original ordinance. This is simply the difference between six hundred and a thousand. It's a one hundred and seventy-seven percent increase in the land that cannot be used. So you're excluding an additional hundred and seventy-seven percent. That's what that increase amounts to. And then, sorry, I'm not very good at show and tell. This is what you've proposed. If you understand that a lot of these businesses are small businesses and that's the idea, if the objective is to keep the profits local and keep the jobs local and give local preference to people here who want to enter into these businesses, then you need to give them room to do that, and you need to give them room to do that where there are small parcels where small businesses could come in. Once you do this, there's no place left. When you take a park that's on the other side of the freeway from seventy, the park is on the other side of the freeway, and because of that thousand-foot distance, it goes over the freeway and crosses over and wipes out this whole strip of some of the smaller parcels that are actually doable for these businesses. I think that's counterproductive. So while I understand, you know, consistency, a thousand, a thousand, we're talking apples and oranges. The first thousand was for, there's gonna be three dispensaries and they can't be closer than a thousand feet to each other. But to take everything and throw a thousand at it and to throw parks in, which are not even affecting those businesses, basically tells those businesses, you don't want them here. And if you don't, and I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be obnoxious in that sense. It's just if you look at this, if I look at this as a prospective business owner, you've kind of zoned me out of existence. And I think what you want is you want these dispensaries to be able to be where people can get to them in a reasonable setting. I thank you for your time and for listening. Excuse me, I'm leaving paper behind.
John Miller George.
I tried to get into the stakeholders' meetings because at one time I was half, well, forty-nine percent owner of a dispensary in Sacramento, actually west, no, not with Sacramento, in Sacramento County. They went through and they zoned Sacramento County out of existence and our dispensary had to close. But an interesting thing about the relationship between dispensaries, they're a lot like a liquor store. There's rules that if you sell to a minor or anybody else who's not eligible to buy, you can lose your license. So the motivations for a liquor store not to sell liquor to minors is pretty much appropriate to the people that are running a dispensary. They don't wanna sell to minors either. And like I said, I had forty-nine percent interest in one and we had surveillance cameras and we had some high school kids that were coming around to our back door, sitting down, lighting up weed they got from who knows where. And when we reported it to the police, our guy with the security camera footage got arrested because he was taking pictures of a minor. So it's not all one way that everybody in the world wants to like push drugs on our children. Okay? I use marijuana myself for my bad ankle on my left leg and my bad knee on my right, and it's a wonderful sleep aid. So I was interested in medical marijuana and that's all there was. And yet still bigotry and paranoia closed us down. Why am I saying this? Well, the reason is, like the former commenter, if you want to not have a business, that's one thing, but everybody in this room should realize in nineteen seventy-two, I got my first joint in Oroville, California, and it was illegal, illegal, illegal. There was no state law, there was nothing. So marijuana was there in nineteen seventy-two, it's there now. When I went to the meeting at the State Theater, and I was saying, I would like to be able to buy my medicine in town. And as I walked out, I got accosted by a man who said, I can get you some right now, as if that's what I wanted, illegal transactions. What I wanted was to be able to buy it. And now, if it's not legal in Oroville, it can still be delivered here. And the only thing it means is, we don't get any money.
Thank you.
That is the last speaker card.
That was the last one? Okay, seeing no other com, uh, participants or people that wanna comment, then we'll close the commenting period. Turn it over to the Planning Commission for discussion.
There was another comment that I wanted to indicate that there was another change that I failed to mention before, and that was the strikeout of minor. Thank you, Mr. George, for mentioning the minor. Is, and I think we're all in agreeance to that, and that was brought up at the council in our joint commission meeting, is the minors can be accompanied by an adult, and we eliminated that, the minor portion. So thank you, Mr. George, for bringing up the minors.
Hey, open for discussion with the commissioners?
Yeah, a few questions for Gary. Under the infrastructure, would wastewater monitoring fall under that for fertilizers or anything getting flushed into the sewer?
Absolutely. So the infrastructure will be, they'll have to have engineered designs before they go into our sewer system and sewer capacity. Whether our sewer system has the capacity for it, there'll be, you know, those will have to be mitigated to verify and make sure, and that will go through our conditional use permit through the mitigation process.
So that covers chemicals that may go into that?
Absolutely.
Okay. I had another question, but I forgot. I'll give it a few minutes if somebody else has a question.
Okay, I had a couple of questions. So alcohol, I mean, I'm just relating alcohol. Alcohol has setback requirements also, so I don't think you could put a liquor store right next to a park or a school. I don't know if you know, Mr. Chief LaGroine, what the setbacks are offhand. But I remember the Axiom was a pretty big deal about putting it downtown Oroville because of those setbacks.
The setbacks on those particular types of setting, there's a, I believe it's a wine tasting room this next door to the Axiom when the Axiom wanted to move in there. That was handled through the alcohol beverage control, and it was handled through negotiation, compromise, and agreement with the two. So they are allowed to coexist in alcohol. There is no hard fast so many feet. Not as far as an example like the Axiom. Now, you can't go, I believe it's within five hundred feet of a school and put in a liquor store. I'm talking like a K through twelve type of educational environment, but as far as this discussion with daycares and youth centers and things like that, there is no hard and fast distance.
Okay. It's one of the comments we added to parks, too, because literally, if you look at the old map, the zoning and allowable use, it could have been literally put in right next to the skate park. And I think we had a comment about, you know, so if you look at that map right there, there's a green area and it literally is right next to the current skate park we have. So we thought we should put some kind of criteria on that, and that's where we came up with parks because I couldn't.
There's so many of them and they cover so much area, and again, the park on the other side of the freeway shouldn't be affecting what's on that side.
And I guess this is.
I don't, I wasn't actually, the wildlife area didn't even come up in my mind at the time when we were talking about parks, but I guess it falls under that.
Oh, no, not at all. But I think that's where we came up with, we gotta come up with a number and we gotta be consistent with the ordinance.
We have to be consistent with state law, which is six hundred. The thousand was, the consistency, as I understood it, was just.
Ma'am?
I'm doing it again.
No, no.
You can come up.
If we, if a member of the Commission has a question for you, come on up and talk.
Yeah, you're welcome to come and talk.
And answer the question, not debate or whatever.
So in terms of the, in terms of the distances, I went and looked myself about liquor stores 'cause I thought, well, makes sense. And I was unable to find something that was this stringent and this expansive. In terms of the consistency, what I was saying about consistency was, I didn't think that the thousand feet distance from all of these, what we call sensitive areas, needed to be consistent with the distance that businesses need to be from each other. That that was not the same thing, that that was apples and oranges.
Sure.
Okay, so that was my, was my sense on that.
So, Commission, with hearing her comments and the comments from the public and also other comments on the thousand feet, that the six hundred feet would be consistent with state law. And then therefore, we would stay within the state law requirement, something that you could consider.
Yeah, but the way the state law reads is that we can exceed the six hundred feet.
Yes.
And that's what we did, went from six hundred to a thousand, which we're allowed to do.
Yes.
The question is whether a thousand is too much, maybe eight hundred or leave it at six hundred. That's the debate the Commissioner's gonna have to have today.
Agreed. That's why I made the comment that six hundred feet is state law and would be consistent with the state law.
I like the thousand feet everywhere except maybe some of the parcels along Feather River. If Highway seventy could somehow cut off. If Highway seventy could somehow cut off, you know, be a cutoff somehow, but leave everything else a thousand feet, I don't know if that's possible.
Chief has a comment.
Commissioner Durnley and Commissioner, one thing you could consider is if you want to stay with a thousand-foot buffer is you could say that parks and then make the differentiation between parks and undeveloped park land. Because most of what you're seeing there is Riverbend Park that has never been developed. It's just still, in the state it was when they did the dredging of the river, so you could, you know, make that different.
Right where I was heading, yeah. No, that's-
Then I'll get out of your way.
No, no, it's, I'm glad, made me feel a little better that I'm not the only one gonna suggest that, but we need to maybe amend the ordinance to exclude those kind of parklands.
So the undeveloped parklands?
Yes.
Okay.
And of course, the issue arises, what happens if the parkland later becomes developed, but
I think-
For right now, I don't have a problem with that, how do the commissioners feel about it?
I think that would fall under the same pretense about adding the Axiom, because the Butte, I remember that liquor license was already there. We added it, if it ever left, it would become a problem, I think, but since it was already existing.
I believe it'd be considered a non-conforming use as long as within the same ownership and the business didn't leave. So if the park were developed, the business would be allowed to exist until such time as it either went out of business or through some ownership change or type of business change, then it would come back for the use permit again and then it would probably not be a non-conforming use any longer.
And I had a question for the gentleman, yes, could you come up? You mentioned that they changed, Sacramento County changed the ordinance and it-
Please speak in the microphone.
It's on, I'm not close enough to it. Weren't you considered a non-conforming use? How did that work?
What happened was the county just said, the county's no, and the city of Sacramento remained yes. We were already in place and there were no licensing or anything like that, and so when they came in, they said, well, we're banning it in the county.
But you were already in existence.
Uh, yes.
Did they do that by ordinance?
Well, the problem was, like I said, there were no licensing procedures or anything like that. You basically found a place that conformed with like the school distance and stuff like that. And then you set up your business and then later they came in and just said, there's no businesses, there's no zoning, there's nothing, you have to close.
Okay, thanks. I don't quite understand that one.
I can give it a shot if you'd like about explaining how that happens.
Yeah.
It has happened up and down the state.
Technically-
Commissioner Jenkins asked a question about the water.
Yeah.
And most marijuana is grown either hydroponically or in organic soil. Frankly, rather than adding a whole bunch of engineers and all this more expenses to setting up one of these businesses, especially the micro businesses which are limited in size and are typically people who don't have a ton of money. Our parks could use the organic soil and the fertilizer. And I would be, I would be willing to bet you that anybody who's actually cultivating would be more than happy to distribute it and cultivate it into the beds of your park. Remember, we're talking about a plant here, we're not talking about nuclear waste.
Okay. Can you clarify the-
Yes.
The non-conforming part of it?
So in two thousand and, oh, fifteen, at the end of two thousand and fifteen, the Medical Marijuana Regulatory and Safety Act, which was comprised of three bills passed through the California Legislature. It put in place a licensing schema and structure for the full supply chain for medical cannabis. So the seed to sale that you hear everybody talk about, from the growing through the manufacturing to the testing, to the packaging, to the retail. That was put in place in two thousand, late two thousand and fifteen. At the end of two thousand and sixteen, a ballot initiative came forward that said, let's do the same thing, licensing schema, for adult use. Prior to two thousand and fifteen, the only businesses that were licensed were the dispensaries. There was no way to license cultivation or manufacturing or testing or any of those things. There was just the sale. So what happened when these new things came in place is local control. You were just talking about local control, where you have the option to be more stringent or to decide locally. So once they came in with this regulatory schema and said, everybody has to get licensed from seed to sale, now the local entities can opt in or opt out. And if you were a business existing, pre-existing, in an area that opted out-
You had to close?
You couldn't get a license. The state won't give you a license if you don't have a local license, and if you can't get the local license, you can't get the state license.
What I wanted to find out.
So the whole thing changed across the board.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. A reminder, CUPs, guys, all of these are conditional use permits, all of them, every one of them.
We're not even, what we're discussing in the ordinance is the establishment of the business, it's not how they get their license.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
The ordinance says you gotta get a use permit, but right now, we're trying to decide even if we're gonna have an ordinance.
True, true, I'm just saying they're called out in the ordinance that people have to get them and there's a lot of control left.
If the ordinance isn't adopted, there won't be any use permits.
No, there will not, there won't be any licenses.
Yep. Any other discussion, any items? And how do you feel about the thousand foot? Do you want to keep it at a thousand feet or?
I like thousand feet.
Yeah.
I guess the only area that I'm not crazy about is the area north and east of Tate Mountain Boulevard and Cherokee Road, but that probably would come up in a use permit.
That'll be probably use permit, yeah. And you, you'll come up with the language, or do we need to develop the language right now?
Well-
To exclude undeveloped?
Well, one thing that we would do is, we do have the, a comment at the table and you had mentioned as well as undeveloped park area. So do we want to add that into the language as an exclusion of undeveloped park area?
That should be in the ordinance.
Uh, that way it is there and then we don't have to lessen anything at a conditional use process.
No.
Is, is the Chinese cemetery considered a park? I always considered it kind of a park or a monument.
But that's in the overlay.
Chinese cemeteries-
That would be in the overlay.
Oh, the cemetery.
The Chinese cemetery is on Feather River Boulevard?
It wasn't considered a park, at least I was told.
Does the city oversee that? I mean-
It doesn't look like Orville Cemetery has any boundaries around it either.
No.
Well, I know, but I was thinking the Chinese cemetery was some kind of a park or a monument, but I didn't know if that was classified as a park or not.
We currently are technically responsible for it because we do pay for water there, however, there is some debate about whose it actually is.
Yeah, you're talking about the cemetery.
The Chinese cemetery that is out on Feather Boulevard that would be to the south of Oradale Boulevard.
Yeah, I had that, when I was appointed to the Parks Commission, we got a tour of all the parks, we didn't go to the cemetery. And I thought, why aren't we going to the cemetery? Because it's not a park. That doesn't it as a park.
It does not fall under the purview of the Parks Commission.
That's right.
None of the cemeteries do.
Okay. That's, yeah, that's quite, probably be the defining guideline there then, as far as the ordinance, you know.
So the commissioners want to keep it at a thousand feet, we get that in that, out of?
I'm okay with a thousand feet.
Me too. If you look carefully, there are places, and there's, the thing is, there's only, if there was gonna be like no limit on the number, or we're gonna have like allow twenty, then there might be a problem, we're only allowing three. And to my mind, with a thousand feet, doesn't prohibit enough places where three businesses could-
Really, it affects part of the Feather River corridor, is the biggest I can see on this amended map. Is everything else, I don't think it affected much.
So keep in mind that the thousand foot for dispensaries is state law. We would, if we're going to amend the thousand feet, it could be for the undeveloped park areas here under C one as an exception?
Yeah, exclusion, excluding.
Well, it would be an exception, undeveloped park areas. Now, do we want undeveloped park areas to be six hundred feet? Or do we want no requirements for undeveloped park area clearances? That would be the question.
Well, zoning wise, we're not allowed in undeveloped park areas anyway.
I don't believe we'll have an issue because of the Highway seventy running along the park anyway.
Okay. Any other items in the ordinance, the way it's drafted now that we want to change or?
Well, I got a question about the churches with twenty or more. It's not on the map, so we don't see those setbacks. Is, and I think you mentioned it, just didn't have time, or do we have a record of that?
GPS or GPS staff was unable to provide that, pull that up like you can and put it on the map because of the church locations.
Does that, you know, that would have to be factored into, you know, what we don't see here. And that could come into the use permit.
Well, if a person comes in and apply, the ordinance says a thousand feet from a church, and if they came in within that thousand feet, the staff would say, you're not allowed there, so don't apply for a use permit. So it's gonna be caught that way.
Okay.
It doesn't necessarily have to show on the map.
Right.
It would be convenient, if it could, for the person that wants to establish the business, so they don't have to, they know where not to look, but-
I think the only area that it would affect would be the area on Upper Myers on this map here. Because I think there are a couple of churches in there.
There may be a couple of churches in that area where that would apply. The map is not part of the ordinance, it's merely for your convenience to see it, and it is not, as staff, we're not going to produce maps for people where they can do this, it's gonna be their responsibility to bring in one and then it'll have to go through the process to make, verify that it meets this ordinance. I think as long as it's written in there, then that will be verified through that process. And again, re-verify when it comes back to the Planning Commission for the conditional use permit.
So, and as my understanding, we're just making the recommended changes for city council. I mean, we're not voting on the ordinance per se.
Absolutely, we're not voting on the ordinance, we're not, we're not given that, we're given a recommendation to the council of approval of, this is what the Planning Commission has reviewed and the changes that we have made to the ordinance if it's so adopted. Keep in mind though, that the council can make their own changes or not, except as goes forward. Additionally, with the churches, when the questions come up with churches, that this is something that we've added in, it's not a state regulation. So if there was a thought process or something like that and they came and it was gonna be within, because I can indicate at this point in time, that there is one location that is within that thousand foot of the church that is, has an interest in, in, you know, the dispensary location. However, in the conditional use, we could require them to get clearance and verification from the church itself. There's, there's processes that can be made.
Any other points of discussion or questions we have?
So I have added in, just before we go forward any, and I think that possibly you might wanna vote on it, is for the exception of the thousand feet, I have added exception under C one, exception undeveloped park areas can, and do we want that can be six hundred feet? Or just give no footage area, give no distance. That's something that the, the commission needs to discuss at this point in time because the thousand-foot clearance of the park areas of, of concern in the, and we have a couple of comments from a commissioner and the chief about undeveloped park areas.
Could we treat it just like any other city-owned property?
Just like another-
Just be another city parcel?
You mean, no setbacks?
Yeah, just, just, you know, a city parcel until it becomes a park and then it'll have setbacks.
No setback requirements for undeveloped, undeveloped parks?
Because, because it's owned by the city or state?
It's just, you know, just a way to-
So then I would then make the, because I've gotta make this change, so we can move this forward, that is our goal right here tonight, to move this forward to the council in what we feel comfortable. So exception, undeveloped park areas.
Yeah, I would have it-
And just leave it at that.
I'd have it read, the second line, a thousand, one thousand-foot buffer from a school, daycare center, public parks, except undeveloped parks.
Well, the exception would go under to be consistent with the rest of the codes.
Okay.
It would be written to be consistent with the rest of the codes.
Okay, so-
In, in format.
I don't have a problem with that.
And leave no, no distance requirements for undeveloped parks.
That would have to be included in the motion, whoever comes up with the motion needs to, because what we're gonna do is adopt this, we're gonna recommend to the city council this ordinance with the changes that we're proposing.
Please speak in the mic.
So we're not, I'm still trying to get clear, so we're not, we're gonna make a recommendation only on the changes. Will this ordinance come back to where the-
We're making a change, we're making a recommendation on the ordinance.
No, we're going to recommend to the council that this is the ordinance to be put in place if in fact they approve the use of marijuana.
Right.
Or the ability for marijuana, that this is what the Planning Commission recommends the municipal, the ordinance be.
The revisions to the drafted ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, that this one that we submit is what we present to them for the ordinance to be.
Now, when, when you present it to them, will the, the stuff that we've changed be highlighted or just left normal black text?
We can highlight it.
In your staff report, I, I-
Yes.
Whatever you do, at least in the staff report to the council-
It will be indicated.
Indicate the changes that we've made to the draft ordinance. Because right now, it's a draft.
Yes.
So I have a real quick question. So has city council already approved the draft ordinance subject to our approval? Did that happen already?
They recommended the draft ordinance to us for consideration.
Okay, there was no-
There was no-
There is no ordinance.
There wasn't, is no approval at this point in time. This is a change of the city municipal code in the ordinance, and it's an addition to it. Therefore, it goes to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation of this is how the, we would like the ordinance to be written for their, if they so approve. And keep in mind, they have the power of authority to make any change to this that they want.
That goes without saying.
Whether they accept or not.
Well, we, we would hope the council make consideration to the Planning Commission's recommendations, at least. Because if this ordinance is gonna go through, we would really like it to be the best ordinance, you know, that is for the city of Orville, you know.
At, at staff level, if they were to approve it, I believe that with the changes that we have made here tonight, they would- I believe that with the changes that we have made here tonight, um, they would accept the ordinance as writ- as we have written to recommend, but I do not make any of those decisions. But at the staff level, um, the staff recommends approval by the commission to move as amended to the council. Now, it's up to you if you want to do a vote on it, a motion, a second, and a vote.
Yeah, the motion would would uh recommend to the city council uh, what, our comments on the draft ordinance, or the draft ordinance itself? The whole ordinance.
The ordinance as written here.
As written, yeah.
With the changes, with the strikeouts that, we have the strikeouts that was indicated before that staff has put together and put forth before, which is inclusive of the strikeouts and the changes that we've made.
Somebody wanna try a motion?
A motion that we recommend to city council, uh, this ordinance as discussed with changes.
Approval? Recommend approval?
Um.
We're recommending that city council approve this as we're proposing it?
I guess that's what we would be doing.
That's what you're doing.
I believe your, if I could, Commissioner Durling, I believe your motion would be, you're recommending the Planning Commission approve it and forward it to the council.
Yes.
And that's, that's your whole motion, with the recommended changes.
Yep. Well, you know, we're, we're all gonna help here. Try it again.
I recommend that we, our motion, that we recommend that city council adopt this cannabis zoning ordinance with the changes discussed.
Any or second? We have a uh, motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Open it for vote. Does it take all four votes? All four to?
Yes.
No, it only takes the majority of the people present.
Mm-hmm.
It requires a majority of the individuals present.
Okay, so, I can hit no, and, because I, I don't wanna recommend the ordinance, I don't believe in it itself. So, if I hit no. We need.
Chapman.
There's one missing, somebody hasn't voted.
One thing to keep in mind is, this is not the Planning Commission approving.
I know.
That's the council.
I don't, I do not want to recommend the council approve it.
Okay, but this is not a recommendation to the council to approve the marijuana ordinance, is to approve this, or if they approve it, this is the ordinance that we would like to have written.
No, I can vote no on the motion, otherwise, there's no need.
You have the right to vote, however you want to vote.
But we're missing a vote from someone.
I'm still thinking.
Huh?
Still thinking.
Oh.
Yeah, this is uh, not an easy decision. It's uh, I I believe uh, this ordinance is coming one way or the other, so I would, I like the changes that we've recommended regardless of uh, the ordinance as it stands.
Okay, voting is, uh, any change in the voting? Voting's closed?
Motion carries.
Motion carries.
Uh, Commissioner, thank you very much for your time on this. Uh, staff has put in a lot of work on this. We know that uh, you have had to uh, do a lot of thinking and work yourself. Um, but, but once again, like I said, uh, the council will be approving or denying, it's up to them for, to make that decision, not us. Um, there is a couple things that I would like to bring up.
Right.
Yeah.
You wanna bring that up under director's report?
Yep, we can.
Any discussion items? None? Director's report?
Yes, uh, just wanted to bring a couple things up for the attention of the council, or, I mean, the Planning Commission in the future of the city of Orville. I had received a call and spoken with D R Horton this morning, and D R Horton has in closing of the subdivisions, the two subdivisions out by the airport. They plan on submitting for permits um, anytime now. And uh, and I had indicated to them that I'll get those permits issued ASAP. So, it appears that we're gonna have some nice housing. D R Horton, if you're not familiar with D R Horton, they build very nice homes. When they come in, they don't leave. So, um, that's a good thing for Orville. The other was, uh, got a call this afternoon from Sanjeet, who is uh, the owner and developer of the old Walmart, who did have the um parcel from Montgomery to Applebee's in Escrow, but then pulled it out. Hasn't called me today, it's back in, and it closes tomorrow. So, uh, we do have that development coming in, uh, which is a very positive aspect for the city of Orville. Um, they are going next week to speak with um Costco. Trying to get Costco to come in. Uh, we will be getting a um, El Pollo Loco. Uh, none der uh Dutch Brothers Coffee in that area, in on, in that development area. He is also, uh, I believe it's uh, La Quinta Motel Chain to come in, motel for, three-story motel. Um, so, development is coming, housing is coming. The um, hospital will be coming up in front of us this month, on the twenty-fifth, I believe, for uh, review and approval of that project as well. So, the city of Orville is in an, an expanding growth process. And uh, just happy to uh, relay that information to the Planning Commission.
I have a question on the, on the hospital thing. An E I R was done on that, wasn't it? Environmental impact report? Of expansion?
There was a a mitigated negative declaration.
It was.
Yes, that was done by staff, and uh, there was all the surveys and reports and everything that came through. And that's what staff had based it off of.
Well, we have the opportunity to review all that information.
That information has been posted, and it is available at the front counter. If you would like a copy of it electronically, just fire me an email.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, the uh, there was a thirty-day process, we did get comments, we revised it. We've got it to the clearinghouse, and I believe the final comment period is October. I'm not sure, I I'll have that information, but it's uh.
I don't wanna comment on it, what I wanna do is be able to read it and understand it, in order to effectively evaluate the project itself.
Yes. So, um, that will be coming to you all anyways, because that's in your next package.
Whatever happened to the um the K F C that's on Oradán there?
Uh, K F C, I've been having uh, collaboration with them. Um, we have extended their permit. Um, they're in a waiting process, I'm not, I'm unsure, the permit's ready to issue. Um, however, I'm certain that once this development in these houses come out, as a matter of fact, I just got that, so, um, I'll be out next week, the beginning of next week. When I come back, I'm gonna fire an email off to them and let them know about the housing development coming in, because that's what they wanna hear.
Do you know anything about the the Bluffs project that was bought by the Chinese group? Are they pursuing that?
So, uh, funny that you ask. Uh, they were in today. Uh, once again, we'll be getting their uh landscape maintenance agreement put together, the buildings are completed, the electrical and utilities have been run. They are ready to start finals. Um, so, they'll be finaling off here soon. I indicated to them that I would have their landscape maintenance agreement ready um, next Thursday for them to pick up. I know Jody had given them the fees of what it is for that. They did wanna dedicate some land to the city on that uh, project. However, it's undevelopable land, and all it is, is maintenance. So, the city did not accept that dedication of land, because that's just tossing the burden over to us to maintain and take care of it.
Okay, um. Do you have any commission reports? Anyone attend any meetings they wanna inform us about? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. And thank you for those who came to help inform us.
See you in October.